Good evening. We'll call the October 11th Board of Selectmen meeting to order. I don't believe that there are any changes to the agenda, so we'll accept that by unanimous consent and announcements.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think we have more announcements than we do agenda items today. Remind everybody that this meeting is being audio and video recorded, as are all. Second announcement's sad. We'd like to recognize the passing of Nantucket's first K-9 officer, Black. Black was born April 22nd, 2003 in Czechoslovakia, and he passed away this past September 28th. Black was fourteen and a half years old. He joined up with his partner, Officer Keith Mansfield, who is here this evening with his family, in December of 2004. That means he served ten years with the Nantucket Police Department after retiring in May of 2015. During his career, Black assisted the Nantucket Police Department, as well as other law enforcement agencies, taking illegal drugs off the street. During some of his more notable fines were the location of a large stash of drugs hidden in the ceiling of a basement apartment and locating narcotics hidden within false bottom arsenal cans. We have a presentation for Officer Mansfield and his family, a bouquet of flowers that Erica Mooney has, and we'd just like to have a moment of silence for the passing of Black. Thank you. Officer Mansfield?
Thank you all for coming tonight.
Thank you all. Our next announcement is a reminder that the Nantucket Harbor, Shimo, and Plus areas sewer extension project work is continuing along West Vesper Lane and McLean Lane and Tashma Lane. There's a public forum on recreational marijuana reviewing the laws, regulations, and articles one, two, and three of the November 6th special town meeting to be held on Thursday, October 26th at 4:30 to 6:30 PM in this room, the community room at Four Fairgrounds. Veterans Day observance ceremony will be held on Saturday, November 11th at 10:30 AM at the Federal Street War Memorial adjacent to the town building. In case of inclement weather, the ceremony will take place at the American Legion Hall at 21 Washington Street. There's a reception to follow at the American Legion Hall. A reminder that the Children's Beach Boat Ramp will be closed from October 31st through January 15th for repairs. The 2008 Annual Town Meeting warrant is open for citizen warrant article submittals until November 20th at 4 o'clock PM. Town Council will be available on Wednesday, October 18th from 2 o'clock to 4 o'clock PM, and Thursday, October 19th from 9 o'clock to 11 o'clock AM in the town building conference room at 16 Broad Street for a consultation. And our final announcement, Madam Chair, is that on November 6th, 2017, special town meeting starts at 6 o'clock PM at the Nantucket High School Auditorium. Special voter registration deadline is Friday, October 27th, Friday, October 27th by 8 o'clock PM. And that's it, Madam Chair.
So now we're at the public comment portion of our agenda. If there's something that someone wished to bring to our attention that's not otherwise on the agenda tonight? Hearing none. I don't believe there's any new business. Approval of minutes warrants impending contracts. We have minutes from October 4th. Any changes? Anyone want to make...
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Approval of the payroll warrants and treasury warrants?
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Approval of pending contracts. Were there any questions on the contracts?
Move their approval.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Citizen departmental requests. We have a request for a liquor license change of manager.
It's all in order. I move approval.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Town managers' report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just wanted to give an update on the Conso Springs Stormwater Improvement Project. I'd like to ask DPW Director Rob McNeil to give us a brief update of the project.
Good evening. No problem. It's working. Thank you very much. I just wanted to kind of give a recap. We just got the final permit that we were waiting for from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers in late September, and it's been something that's been in the works for about a year and a half, waiting for this final permit. So clearly, a lot has been going on well before my arrival here. The project has been in some means of design since 2012, with a lot of concept work happening. And I should point out that this is a critical discharge outfall to the harbor. The watershed that drains to Conso Springs extends all the way from the old mill. It's quite an extensive watershed, encompassing about 150 acres of overall influence on this discharge. The project as designed is looking, plans to replace the culverts running under the newly constructed bike path on the backside of the pond, dredging out the old pond, as well as replacing some storm drains along Bear Street and along Union to ultimately to discharge into Conso Springs. Our design engineer, GZA Environmental, has again been engaged with the town even before 2012, but specifically on this project in one means or another, since 2012 actively pursuing final design and permitting. And really what I'm here tonight to talk about is, based on, let's say, the focus of stormwater efforts here more recently, and some of the, let's say, off-site things that we've noticed that contribute to this area. A lot of flooding along Sparks Avenue and some of the other area within this watershed. It is DPW's opinion at this time that this project really sort of falls short of the original goals that were set that talk about water quality improvements, substantial water quality improvements for the harbor. So we have, we've talked to the consultants about it. We've talked to Natural Resources, and as I've listed in my memo here, Land Council, Land Bank, and Conservation Foundation, who have all given us some really good feedback on a couple of different options here. We're planning to meet with regulators very soon to talk about essentially modifying the currently approved plans without going too far and not starting from scratch, but using what has already been developed to enhance that and really get what the taxpayers deserve for this project, including some off-site watershed improvements to deal with capacity flooding issues that we have, even in some of the smallest storms. This will collectively work in conjunction with the previous projects constructed within the watershed along Sparks Avenue and Silver Street to ultimately do some dramatically, some dramatic improvements to ultimately nutrient reduction, sediment containment, and allow us to remove a lot of this material that's now traveling in, eutrophying Conso Springs or making it all the way to the harbor. So I'm happy to entertain any questions you might have.
How much longer will it take to get an answer? How long do you think, how much will it hold up?
Sure. We're going to meet with regulators to find out if the ideas that we've been kicking around are permissible to begin with. Secondly, to find out what kind of latitude we have within the existing permits that might allow us to do some of these enhancements, or let's say, go a little above and beyond what's been currently permitted and on the plans. So, once we understand that, we'll have to come back and make that decision, whether it's reset and go back through the process for another year, year and a half from the time that it would be rebanked and sent back in, or do we proceed with what we have. So, we should hear, I would hope, within a month.
Or whether you phase it, whether you do part of it and...
Correct.
Okay.
It's important to note, though, with dredging specifically, that's not a phaseable type of approach. And so that's why, that's really the most important piece here, is to understand if that is something we want to move forward with, or is it okay as permitted?
So, you named a pretty high-powered, talented group of constituents. When you mentioned all the constituents that are sitting at the table thinking about this, my own view is that we should do it right. And if those folks sit around the table and say, "We should start over, let's," you know, things, I don't know. So personally, I wouldn't be offended if that was your conclusion.
I think the idea of involving those folks specifically was to see if I was seeing things correctly. And I think it was reassuring that I think I was, in that this, in my opinion, falls a bit short of what I think the expectations are from the public, and particularly the people that frequent that area. Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you, Chief McNeil. Tonight, we have Takro Holland, our Nantucket Housing Specialist, as well as Mark Hess from Halkene, to give us an update on the Six Fairgrounds Municipal Housing Project.
Hello. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. So, as you all are probably familiar, there's been a lot of work that has transpired since the board awarded the bid for the construction of 64 units of rental housing apartment style on what we've been referring to as the Six Fairgrounds Road location, next door to where we are tonight. And it's been critical to move things along in an expeditious manner from the standpoint of applying for some of the financing that was part and parcel to making this whole project work. The board will recall that the town's approach has been, you know, we're putting up land more or less at a nominal fee for a long-term lease, and that is our principal contribution to making this all work, and therefore, the finances are really the responsibility of the developer. And so, in order to apply for the financing that they are seeking, permitting from the planning board, as well as the HTC, really needs to be in place at the time they are applying for these credits. And again, Mark Hess from Halkene is here tonight and can get into a little more detail if that's helpful. But the essence of it is, there is a pre-application in November, and if you are, you have your ducks in a row, you are then invited to submit for the financing at the beginning of the year. That does not at all in any way guarantee you will be getting the financing in the first round, but it's important to be moving things along, as we've discussed a little bit before. So, as you can imagine, in the course of working with the various boards, the planning board and HTC principally, in seeking approval of the plans and taking into account considerations brought up in a coordinated review, which took place at the end of August, the plan has evolved from the original submission to try to address the various concerns that have been brought forward along the way. So, tonight, we're really here, Andrew Borst and I, to support some desires that we think might both serve the project well and the town and community as a whole well. So, as you saw in the memo, there are several different areas that we're really here to seek the board's support for tonight, and it's important to address the issues tonight, as the planning board is taking up this project tomorrow. And again, to try to keep on the timeline, they've looked, they're looking for some indication from this board about support for some of these recommendations. So, with that, I can take you through each of the items. I don't know if it would be the pleasure of the board, Madam Chair, to discuss each one as we go through, or maybe take them, take questions up at the end, whatever your pleasure.
I think we should do them one, go through one at a time.
Go through one at a time, okay.
Let's go process question before we get into the individual items.
Yep.
Tell me about the process that led to this list being generated. I mean, did these emanate from a developer? Did they come from you? Were they terms that were negotiated?
Well, these...
Were these items that...
These are items, again, through, really largely driven by the process of working, taking into consideration what we heard in the coordinated review, then going through the processes, both with the planning board under the special permit process there, and HTC approval, incorporating the requests and desires, to the best of our ability, to address the sometimes competing desires of different entities.
So, if you go through, if you could just say, "Planning board asked us to do this," or "This came about as, with the conversation from the developer or HTC," that would be helpful, because right now, they're just kind of lying in, and it'd be helpful if you could...
Sure. I'll attempt to the best of my ability, yep. I mean, there are a couple of principles in place that probably are drivers for some of these. One is parking, and, you know, trying to get to the appropriate parking level, both onsite and within proximity. The other is green space, and the, call it livability. And those, both of those considerations have come up in all three of the discussions that I, or discussions with the three groups I just described. So, I'm not sure necessarily any, that the recommendations come from one particular entity, but again, if I can, I will.
But essentially, you're saying that most of these recommendations come from within the town, within these different towns?
These are recommendations that both Andrew and I would support. Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry. So, item number one is the granting of a license and eventual 99-year easement to Tacoma Green over an approximate 20-foot wide strip uniformly along the southwestern boundary of the public safety lot. So, we're talking about this area right here is the suggestion. Simply for the use of land construct, excuse me, simply for the use of and construction and landscaping of a winding five-foot path at Tacoma Green's sole expense, so at the developer's expense. Access to this area would also meet fire department required requirements as conveyed to date. I will update on that. Originally, the fire department had requested this 20-foot wide access on that side of the development. My understanding is subsequent discussions have arrived that that, for the fire purposes, may not be necessary. But...
So, you want to delete that from the recommendation?
No. It's, there's still a desire to have, so, I had the opportunity to sit down with Deputy Chief Gibson the other day, and he expressed some concerns about this request from a few different standpoints, and I'm not sure the chief, the chief was here, he's still not, so I'm not sure if the chief...
Fire chief, yes.
Yes. No, I'm sorry, I meant the police chief with Deputy Chief Gibson.
Oh, right, right, okay, okay.
But Deputy Chief Gibson had expressed some concerns basically around the moving of the fence, as he described where the location of the fence on the public safety lot is intended to go. And I'll have the developer come up and maybe add a little bit to this. But really, the main intent they have there is to make it the most aesthetically appealing situation along this border area between these two lots. So not, you know, trying to consider that while they are separate lots, they all work together. And nobody wants to interfere in any way, of course, with operations and so forth on that lot. Yes.
Just a question. If you don't need the full 20 feet that was anticipated for fire, could you do something slightly smaller behind there to accommodate a sidewalk with some plantings along the edge rather than the 20 feet?
I can invite Mark.
If there's concerns about where the fence goes and that kind of thing.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Hi.
My name is Mark Hess, for the record, and I represent Halkene and the Tacoma Green Project on the Six Fairgrounds Lot.
I just want to...
There you go.
There you go. So, the honest answer, in terms of exactly what it's going to look like, is we don't know, right? What we do know is that, and it's hard to see from this because of the resolution, is that the lot line, see this dotted line right here? That's actually the lot line, right there. And our concern here is, the current PSL lot design, basically about five or 10 feet off of the lot line, has a big, at least from here and here, has a big security fence. And then all of this is kind of drainage and retention. And we're spending a lot of work with the HTC and with the planning board to make a really desirable community. And, you know, we're hoping this comes up later as maybe this lot or gets developed as a playground, as a public playground. You have the bike path right here, and this is sort of edge space that is, is not really utilized from what we can see. Of course, you know, others from the fire and police department might have different ideas, but from our understanding of their program, you know, there's a, the parking lot is way over here, for the most part, and this is retainage. So if we could flip the fence over here, this becomes a usable greenway. So, our intent was to have some amount of control over that space, so we could spend money and landscape it and make it an attractive connection, and so that we didn't have people coming out of their doors and looking at a six or seven-foot tall chain link fence that's like right in front of them. And if all we have is a five-foot buffer, it means that you go stoop to pavement to fence. And that's, you know, so, we know that we can do better than that. Whether or not we need 20 feet, we probably don't. You know, having some width where we can make the path meandering, instead of just a straight path, also kind of enhances the aesthetics and the beauty of the space and gives some flexibility for planting. So, this is, this is a dimension. It was set originally because of the width we thought we needed for the fire trucks. Could we shrink it, or, you know, can we, is there some give and take? The retention pond comes up later in the discussion. And I know there's a lot of concern that this is out to bid, and if they redesign it as subsurface, you know, we think that we could actually make the path work around the retention structures, maybe with a little bit of tweaking here and there, but without totally re-engineering the whole system. But that's where we're coming from. It's just really about aesthetics and usability of the space, and trying to prevent a situation where we've got a big security fence that is right outside the window and doors of the, those buildings.
I'm wondering, I don't know if, oh, sorry. I don't know if anybody can answer this, but is there any reason why the security fence couldn't go on the opposite side of the retention pond, if it's...
That would be the ideal situation, is that it was closer to the actual parking spaces.
Right. Not that you're going to take that length away from them, but that it just moved in for the aesthetic of the people living.
I think that's really a conversation the chief needs to be part of.
Yeah. So I'm just, that's why, I'm just raising it, not necessarily expecting an answer at this moment.
No, I know, but it's, for tonight, it's, you know, that's a good question.
We have the fire chief who I think wants to say something.
Good evening. Deputy Gibson did send out a memo regarding this, and I did get it. And what he was concerned with was the bioretention for the stormwater system, with this typical topic, and having it permitted with the state and with the town, and having to redesign the whole system. That's why he didn't want this, the fence moved in that space. And originally, that space was going to be engineered for access, to put a truck back there, but it's been not required as it stands now.
Okay. So, when you asked your question about this, from the town, no, I'm saying, are these coming, so there's some disparate views within the town on these issues?
Yeah. And I'm just still wondering if the security fence itself could flip, even if the retention pond stays in the same place. It just, that's just a question I'm putting out there.
And I could say that, you know, we'd be happy to condition the easement, subject to not interfering with, other than relocation of potential fencing, the overall engineering of infiltration system. It's really about, you know, where can we put green space and plantings in a nice path.
Madam Chair and Board, I'd just like to say that, I mean, we understand that there needs to be the fenced-in parking lot, but on other projects that we've worked on, the fence typically can be located along the edge of the parking lot, and doesn't have to be located across the swale on the property line. I think the key, the importance, I think, and Chief Murphy, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the importance is the fenced-in parking lot, which you can see the edge of the lot shown there, and as long as that remains fenced in, I don't see why the fence has to arbitrarily be out at a property line, which is really an internal line.
But I heard there were some permitting issues that Deputy Chief brought up. Maybe we could, it'd be nice to have that memo, maybe.
Deputy Gibson referenced the state and the DE, the DEB permitting for the bioretention system for the drainage, and whether it had to be redesigned if that, if it was in true to the pond or that respect.
You mean if the fence was moved?
If the fence was moved, then that area was...
Okay. So that's probably a question we need to have an answer before we take action on this item.
Because I'm just wondering if it's meaning the fence moved so that it interrupts the drainage, or whether it could completely flip over the drainage. So that's, we can probably get an answer to that.
Right.
But that gets the, the DEP has to weigh in on that conversation.
And Madam Chair, my experience with DEB permitting is that if, I think that concern was more about converting it from an open, an open, into a underground, I don't think the fence, per se, has really anything to do with DEB regulations, but we can certainly get you that answer.
Okay.
And we discussed some of these concerns previously, months ago, as, when we were trying to find a way to bring the cost of the fire station project down, and, you know, sort of if you ran the fence on the full perimeter, it's twice as big as if you run the fence around just what you need.
Right.
And if you run a fence, then you're precluding people from using it for shared parking and other uses. So that was one of the things that we were hoping to, at least I, as one member, was hoping to address when we got to the, you know, permitting stage on the fire department of finding a way to make it multiple use. There's no, doesn't make any sense in my mind to have a big, huge, empty parking lot if you can share part of it. I understand that the, you know, the, I understand the firemen have to have their cars in there, and certain things have to be in there, but maybe not all of it. So that we share a lot of parking here, and it works great. So anyway.
I mean, just...
Was that a, go ahead.
I think that we, a lot of us felt that way, and I don't really understand why we're paying to fence in a drainage swale, even, when it could just be kind of like green space that slopes down off of the housing, and it would be much more attractive, but...
So, did you think about, talk about actually incorporating some of the... So did you think about, talk about actually incorporating some of the police and fire parking into this project? Not just not allocating the spaces so much, but just from a design perspective?
I'm not trying to understand the question.
So the question is, we're talking, we've got a lot of empty spaces, and is there a way to, you know, broker that with the parties that own that space now to create access for this project?
We did, we did think about that. I think we received a memo that that was not, at least for the fenced-in parking area, that that was, there was really no ability to share with that, that for security and other reasons, I think. So we, we basically backed away from that request.
Well, you could move the fence.
The fence is a different subject.
No, I mean, you could, you could make the, couldn't you make the parking lot smaller by moving the fence?
That's really what we're trying to get your support for, is that by-
But that's, I'm talking about-
Constricting the fence closer to that rear parking area. It, and as Don just said, it removes some fencing from around the drainage area.
But it doesn't create any parking?
It doesn't.
That's what I'm talking about. Can you, have you thought about the unused, a lot of unused parking space in the public service building? Can that, could that, and I think that's really Matt's point, I think.
Well, I don't think, we, I'm, I'm, that is my point, but we haven't designed that. That isn't sort of what we're here for tonight. One of the questions I had was just a general, maybe for town council, but we put out to bid, you know, none of that space, we didn't put Lot 82 out to bid. And so do we have any, will, will be any pushback from any of the other bidders? Will they be able to come back and cry foul and say, hey, wait a minute, you, you know, we allowed you to bid it, you know, we would have done something different if we knew we were going to get Lot 82 and we were going to get 20 feet along that buffer? Do we, are we opening ourselves up to any potential problems and making this slow down? Slowing down your process? I want to ensure that we're not overstepping what we should have been, we should have done.
Well, we know, I mean, if you remember, when we came in originally, this building here was down here, and we had 64 parking spaces. So the change has really been driven by the various HTC and the planning board. We had a single in-and-out, you know, plan that, that we thought worked originally, and we're trying to make all the commonest that we can, and we're, and Andrew, I think, thoughtfully asked us to look at, hey, look, you know, these lots are going to be developed at some point, and these lots are going to be developed. You've got this big development over here, this isn't just an island, and at the end of the day, it's really still town-owned land, and it's a town initiative. So maybe we should think about connections and the community as a whole and what the needs will be for kids and, and things of that nature. So that's when we started, we looked at parking in this, and that kind of became a don't-go-there kind of feedback that we got, and we did have some, and even there's some recommended parking space expansion here, which is where the, the subsurface infiltration versus the retention pond was recommend over here as a way to get additional parking spaces in the non-secured area for just community use. But I understand those are really for first responders, and that there wasn't an appetite to change the design of the infiltration system at this stage of the game. So we're, we're okay with that. We're just trying to come up with ideas that we thought were an overall enhancements. So your question about, you know, do we open ourselves up to litigation about the whole process? We're specifically asking for this board of selectmen to support the initiatives here, understanding that we can only do licenses at this point without a larger disposition process. We're looking for your support as a vote of confidence that we could eventually have more permanent accommodations by an easement for the use that would really, at the end of the day, benefit a project that, that it will revert to the town at some point in the future. The idea that you can, you know, we had planned a small, little tot lot here, right? But you're talking about 100 and, you know, people want more parking. The trade-off was to, well, we can add more parking spaces, but something has to go. And the suggestion was made, well, you know, if we develop all these and these are all families here, you know, where are their kids going to play? You know, how are we going to deal with that? And then it was suggested by Andrew that we consider, you know, either here or one of the other lots, you know, maybe there can be a larger public amenity that serves not just Tacoma Green, but the larger neighborhood because it's an obvious need. And then you can do something like, you know, a splash lot, you know, more age groups served by the playground equipment, more for ADA accessible equipment, and of course, with the connections with the fairgrounds, with a bike path here, as well as, you know, maybe the development of the planning building at some point as a commuter lot and parking, you know, this, you know, think a little bit bigger in terms of how this all fits together. So that's what we've tried to do here. Whether or not that's something that someone could litigate against, I think they'd have a hard time because we're responding to the process and the feedback from the community.
What do you guys want to answer my concerns? Is it something I shouldn't be worried about?
Well, I, I think, Matt, if you remember, when you were on the review committee with the rest of us, and when we picked this particular consultant, parking was specifically mentioned that that was going to be a problem. And it has been a problem in terms of permitting in that the permitting entities also agreed more parking had to be provided. I think, too, providing the access for the fire department to the corners of the building took out some of, some of that playground. Believe, right, we had to keep the access through, so.
Right, but that, and I, and I agree with all that, Andrew.
Yes.
My, my question more is one of, we, are we, if, if we, you know, take a vote to give up Lot 82 and to give up 20 feet along that side, are we opening ourselves up to any of the other bidders crying fouls?
And, and I think that we're not taking, we're not taking a vote to do permanent easements. We're just basically improving other municipal property around it, is what I see, but.
So is it more like we're taking a gift of them improving property that we own?
So, yeah, just, we've kind of jumped ahead to one of the other items here, but-
Sorry.
But since we're on it, Lot 82-
How about about finishing questions on item one?
Just a second if I could. So Lot 82 is, the idea is, it does not go to the developer. It is a town project that is a greater playground. It's a town decision about how do we want to utilize that space? So it is not, I just want to be clear that it's not an additional lot that would go to the developer.
Right, but we have, and, and one of the things, one of the charges we have right now is we don't want to, we, is this, we have voted not to, you know, release any of these other lots until we see a master plan of what's going to happen. And that was, we, Habitat asked for two lots, and we said, geez, we really do need to do a master plan of this. You know, I look at that and say, geez, it's great to have the bike path along the top edge, but maybe it should go along the bottom edge and service all the Tacoma lots. You know, and maybe there should be some sort of alley behind there.
Well, there is, I think there's a sidewalk along here right now.
But I'm saying if you're going to put two dwellings or three dwellings on those lots, which you're allowed to by, you know, by law now with a tertiary dwelling, if you do it right, then how, you know, maybe you're going to want an alley, and maybe you want that bike path along the bottom edge. Was that anything that was considered in these? You did? Okay.
So the other, the plan that's not showing, Matt, is basically behind those lots is a, is a joint, like a back alley, basically, that would serve all of those lots, so there'd be no cut-throughs there. So the, so the bike path and the sidewalk along Tacoma would be uninterrupted except for that one potential downfall at, between Lots 67 and 68.
Got you, yeah, okay.
So that way-
That's good then, so that, that is, okay, so you don't need it there because you've got it on the road and-
We're servicing them from behind, yeah.
And why did you choose Lot 82 rather than, say, one of the Tacoma lots, like 70, that has better proximity?
Well, the, we're, I, I think we're not definitely, 82 makes sense because, again, there's family housing across the street and other places, it's right, it's not right on the corner. But it could be any of those other lots if the, if, we don't have to choose that particular lot.
Okay.
But if that would be one of the lots under consideration with some, with some other ones.
But we, we need to decide which lot.
I speak. I will add, what we would allow, though, is, in our, in the build-out scenario, and we probably should have brought that slide, is we give up our driveway here so that you can create parking for the playground here, so you actually gain the space as access to more parking to service the lot here. So that's just one of the benefits, other than it's also not on as busy of a street, but.
So that would allow some people who don't live right there to drive and park and utilize the playground.
These could be, these would be non-resident parking spaces. This would be public playground, public lot. We'd be granting an easement here eventually for the driveway connection to service these, so you don't have the cut-throughs, and then an easement here to allow parking spaces along the side for the town, if the town chooses to design in that fashion.
So to, to go back to item one, which I think Jim had just mentioned. So I think we've clarified with the chief's help that the 20-foot-wide easement is no longer required for the fire access purposes. There still is a desire to have some use of the land over there. I think, again, as the chief pointed out, the principal concern in the original discussion with Deputy Chief Gibson was over the suggestion of changing the stormwater system. And so the opportunity to look at either working with the fence on the same side but without interfering with the stormwater plans, or flipping it closer to the parking is, was also brought up. I think those are really the objectives that we're seeking there in order to allow for the type of aesthetic preference that Mr. Hess described.
So I don't know if this is a level of detail that you need for tomorrow night, but I'd certainly be in favor of the concept of a easement for some, for that, for those purposes you outlined.
If we could work it out to the satisfaction of working with the public safety lot operations and so forth.
I would be supportive of that, as long as it doesn't trigger-
But again, it's still a concept, it probably isn't going to be just like this.
Exactly, that's correct.
So in terms of, I wouldn't want to vote on yes to this, to say, in favor of the concept.
Just see if we can get a consensus.
And I changed my mind on Lot 82, it makes sense, after your description, I think that would be a good playground area, so.
Thank you.
Jason?
Yeah, I'm, number one, I'd want to support it if, I'd like to see if we, if there's some kind of compromise there with public safety to move the fence.
Okay, so I think, I think you have a pretty strong consensus on working on that.
Madam Chair, I just, I'd be remiss if I just didn't chime in, I think it's all great, but it's more answering selectman fees questions and looking at the CPO, the Chief Procurement Officer. We may not be able to do anything with Lot 82. We will check with council, Council, John Giorgio, to make sure it's okay. Great in principle, I just want to protect the town to make sure we don't get any lawsuit.
Right now, we're just, we're just talking about moving the fence and putting that path behind.
That's all, I just want to make sure you get that 82 out there.
As terms of number one.
Yeah, exactly.
But, yeah, but you have to ask that question, too.
Yeah.
You know, like, when you put out, when you put something out for bid, it's very specific what you put out for bid.
That's true.
And if you change it after, you may open yourself up to stuff. It's what, great for us to sit here and say, it's not a big deal, but we, you know, there's some guys with a lot of money that put a lot of time and effort into this that might have lawyers who think it differently, and it could, it could drag this thing out for years. If there's any chance of that at all, we move on, we don't-
But even if there's no easement, I like the idea of moving that big chain link fence further away from the back of these buildings.
Well, that's it, we'll all go there some Saturday and move it with you.
Yeah, no, that-
It just doesn't seem like a very friendly-
We need to check with John Giorgio on all these things, too. But that shouldn't take long, so.
Okay. Thank you. So item number two, granting a license and eventual 99-year easement to Tacoma Green over an approximately 20-foot-wide strip for the use and construction at Tacoma Green, sole expense from an approximately 20-foot-wide reinforced eco-paver-type strip to allow emergency fire truck access to Tacoma Green from Tacoma Way over the lot line adjoining Lots 67, 68. So here, we're talking right here. And this was always actually considered and a part of the RFP as far as they needed, the developer needed to determine where they might want access. And so this is really a fulfillment of that provision. And, and now they've got a decision of where they'd like it to go, and have consulted with Chief Murphy on the best location.
And we'll still be able to site houses on Lot 67?
Yes.
Then I'm fine with it.
Okay.
Obviously not over the, not over-
Not over the eco-paver, of course, yeah.
So you're going to have a different shaped building?
Well, you're just having a deal with the left of the lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, but you have to think about, the, we, these are valuable assets of the town that we have to make sure that we are, you know, getting the most benefit from.
And again, why wasn't the, doing the access from the back? Going back to number one, says area, you know, that's no longer needed for the fire department? Why, why wasn't that upper area used for?
The fire chief can help us with that.
I'm, I'm sure the chief will correct me if I'm wrong. We did go back and forth about different access patterns, and what we, it's not shown on here, but the primary focus was to get to the, each corner of the building. So we've got a reinforced area here where this corner can be reached. This is actually a flush drive-in where we can hit these corners. This can be, come in from this side and hit this corner here and this corner. They're comfortable using the bike path to access these corners here. And then the reach of their ladder truck from the center aisle of this parking lot can actually reach the back of this building, so this no longer came neat, became necessary.
Makes sense.
So that's how we ended up with that particular pattern.
So item number three, granting a license and eventual 99-year easement across Lots 77, Lot 78, the public safety lot, and Lot 80, which is weight drive to Tacoma Green for emergency vehicle access and other ordinary and customary purposes such as utility line, sheet water drainage, and other draining infiltration infrastructure, so long as the current and future uses of Lot 77, 78, and weight drive are not unreasonably impaired.
Can you show those on here?
Actually, Mark, yes, actually, 77 is-
That's the public safety lot.
Both 77 and 78? Okay.
So what?
Yeah, it says it.
So where are they?
77, 78, PSL, 80 is weight drive.
80 is the road lot.
80 is the road lot.
77 and 78 are PSL.
Are both the PSL.
Okay. Sounds reasonable to me.
Yeah, I mean.
Is that like to say this sounds good? Is that, that's enough of an affirmation for you?
I think, it seems like you have a consensus.
Yeah, I think we want to be able to, we want to be able to report a consensus subject to town council's review.
Okay, cool.
Yeah.
All right.
And any licenses would come back to the board for review?
Oh, yes. Yeah, absolutely. So the, item four is modification of the public safety lot to first move the proposed PSL fence closer to the PSL parking areas to create a larger usable public green space is really the item we talked about in number one. Item number two is not a requirement now, as we just had talked about earlier, the conversion to the other system. So we would, we're removing that request.
B and C.
B and C as well. That's, Mark had touched on, we had brought up the idea of shared parking when we saw some exterior parking outside the secure area next to the new fire station. We thought it might benefit both that facility as well as next door. Deputy Chief Gibson made clear in our conversation that that exterior parking is not intended for the public other than for emergency situations and, of course, for first responders, so we are no longer seeking IMC.
I mean, I, you know, I don't know if you want to push back on that, but there's a lot of empty parking spaces there, so I won't say anymore.
Well, I think if we're not converting to the alternative stormwater system, you're going to run into a space issue.
Okay, okay.
So if, I think there's a consensus on foray really from item one, that's great.
Yes.
Item five, town improvement of Lot 82 as a municipal-scale public splash pad slash playground area with public parking spaces, including two handicap, handicap spaces provided. Tacoma Green would contribute an amount to improve Lot 82 equal to the approximate amount it would have cost to build the playground originally planned. it would have cost to build the playground originally planned for, you know, onsite, if you will, and Tacoma Green agrees to make commercially reasonable efforts to amend its permits and plan to construct three additional units within the project. So, sort of the idea that if, as Matt has brought up, this, you know, this lot has development potential if it weren't used in this alternative way. So, the developer has indicated that they're willing to look at the ability to incorporate the three additional units within the project if the bylaws and so forth allow for it, in essence. And I don't know if you want to add anything to this, Mark?
This is not something that we, we would really want to do because it'd be expensive to do a redesign, but it was a comment that was brought up in terms of losing the, the unit potential. So, should it become a priority for the town to somehow get those extra units back? We're willing to work and try to find the resources in a way to fit them into the project. It's not a condition of ours, it's an indication of flexibility to try to make it work if that becomes the town's priority.
I think that came from me. I'll admit it.
Yeah.
But just, the thought was, could you reutilize the square footage of that lot and just incorporate the dwelling units into the project? Which I don't, I'm thinking you can't under the zoning bylaw, without merging it, which we would not be doing, so.
Right, and maybe we can't do that, I mean, it might be possible if the bylaw passes that allows for aggregation of the units. I mean, there's also a possibility, maybe we do, you know, three tiny units there or something in one corner and use the rest of it. So, I mean, there's no specific playground design there at 7,500 square feet, which is, you know, a fairly, a good-sized area, and maybe it could be a combination of both, so.
Yeah, I'm not that keen on having to have the replacement buildings. I think it's appropriate for us to designate space in a community for playgrounds and not have to say, well, we got to tell the developer they got to figure out a way to add, so I, I wouldn't even personally, up to this group, but I wouldn't even ask them to go through the effort.
Yeah, I wouldn't go crazy over that. I mean, I like the idea of utilizing that 70, if we're going to go that route as a community area, you know, do a playground and do a basketball court, so you cross all sort of ages of children and potential adult use as a, as a community area.
Well, but then, if, and if that's the direction we're going, that's fine, but then under A, they'll have to find, we, as a town, are going to have to find the funding for a good portion of that. They're willing to fund a small amount, you know, or they're willing, they're willing to fund what they would have done for a smaller playground in the center of their place. This is something six times bigger.
Well, we have to...
So, we, so I just, I just want to clear, we're committing to X amount of dollars to build a playground.
Maybe there would be an open space component that CPC would consider funding?
We, and exactly, we've already spoken to the chair of the CPC conceptually, and he indicated that this type of project would be applicable to what the CPC does.
There's been a general lack of open space requests at CPC because the island does so much with open space through other venues, but...
Yeah.
I like your initial idea, Don, myself. I like the idea of getting three more units here, and...
I just don't think it fit, that was when I was thinking if that lot became combined because you get a unit per every 2,500 square feet. I think that 64 was the max on those actual lots, so if we're not, I think that there's a problem with that, that idea with falling within our zone. So, it was a good thought.
Yeah, it was a great thought.
Matt, doesn't that bring us back, though, to your first point about changes in the RFP? So, it would be, it sort of precludes the opportunity, yeah.
That, that's a good point as well. So, am I correct in hearing that there's general support for 5A and that 5B is certainly the, the flexibility of the developers appreciated, but it's not a requirement? Is that a fair summary?
I would agree with that, yeah.
So, we want to keep, you're asking, you're saying we should keep B in or take it out?
I think we're kind of...
Finessing it?
It's not essential?
No, I think, I, well, do what you want, but I think if I were the developer, I'd like a little more direction, but, so.
I think we're saying we're not going to pursue B if this board is okay with not pursuing B.
Yeah, yeah, okay, good.
Yeah.
Then I would, I would push hard on being, getting as much as you can on A for funding.
Yes, oh, absolutely, no, yeah.
If you're not, if we're not going to be expenses on the other and putting more units in, I would negotiate that point for you.
Yeah, and, and to be clear, it's not, the, what we're saying with A is the support of the use of the land for this purpose, and again, the developers making a contribution, and then we would be seeking funds through other sources to, to make that happen.
Do you have any idea, ballpark, high level, what percentage of a development of a playground, what's ever on pages, whatever, 22, 26, 45, or 49?
I'm sorry?
What kind of, what, what contribution would that have been? And what's the development cost of a playground on 82? I mean, are we talking 50?
Nobody knows.
No, is it 50% or 10% or, I mean?
The contribution that would be made?
The, the difference, that somebody's got to make up.
Yeah.
Is it 50% or?
I don't, I mean, it depends on, largely on what's done. I mean, splash, a splash lot is, can be quite expensive because it's plumbed and it has pumps and electricity and all that. I don't know, but I would say that probably less than 20% if it's a municipal scale versus just a community scale. It's not a huge, but, but we do have, from the CAD software, sort of, we've dropped it in a, a real unit in our previous plan, so I could get from the architect what that was, and there could be a reasonable process for costing that out.
So, item six is the cause, the so-called Lot 80 weight drive to be improved for vehicular access to the project from, from Lot 80 to the standards applicable to paveways in the town of Nantucket, including but not limited to sufficient sewer storm and water utility service to serve the Tacoma Green brought to the boundary of Tacoma Green with allowed connections there to permit the project to enjoy customary rights in Lot 80 weight drive for the installation of utilities, sidewalks with connections from Tacoma Way to the end of Lot 80, and approximately 45 public parallel on-street parking spaces. So, this is really, you know, seeking a reaffirmation of the town's commitment to create the access point to this project.
Sounds good.
At whose cost?
The town's cost.
I thought that the developer was going to improve it up to their lot.
So, Lot 80 is actually, is the road, that's, this is Lot 80, the weight drive. So, this was represented as the RFP process, something that would be built out by the town, and I, my understanding that there's no funding, it hasn't been, we're a little worried about it because it hasn't been authorized as, as a project yet, so we want to kind of put it out there to make sure everyone's focused on it and that the, the project timeline doesn't get ahead of the actual street timeline, or, and that's where, why we brought it up.
Isn't some of this money coming from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund? That's, that was, been, been talked about for a couple of years, for infrastructure.
I believe there was some discussion about a million dollars that was provided by the board of selectmen, that, that some portion of that would be made available.
Yeah.
I believe there was a discussion at the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. There isn't a number, I think, that has been arrived at yet. But I've also included at least improvements to this road as part of the capital budget this year, so this will be plugged in as part of the normal budget procedure to build out that road. I think you need to remember this is a laid-out public road, it's not fully built yet, but it's, you know, I think also, I think while some contribution is reasonable, I mean, we don't have a lot of money given to housing on Nantucket and to siphon that off to build roads. This road, weight drive, is going to be used for lots of different public purposes, not just this project.
Yeah, yeah, can we, can we please work on naming that?
Unless we're keeping weight.
And do we have an overall cost of developing the entire road with all the parallel spaces and everything?
We, in the proposal that we submitted for capital, I met with Rob, is he still here? She's gone. Rob and I did work up a proposal based on the improvements, so there, there is a number that's a, you know, a good faith guess at this point, but the, the road hasn't been engineered, and there's all kinds of things that still have to happen.
And what was the guess?
So, what is the number?
It was not insubstantial because it's a long road.
Is it 5 million?
No, it wasn't that much, no.
2 million?
I'm thinking it was in the 1, 1 million range.
Okay.
To do a complete road.
Oh, it's, it's an S.
Oh, I'm sorry, Brian.
1.2?
1.2.
Does that include the engineering? Okay.
But I think, Brian, haven't you been adding the 20% kind of for development costs, some of those, anyway? All right.
Okay, so the question is if we're funding the whole road and what our timeline is?
Yeah, I think it's, as Mark said, it's really reaffirmation that the town is going to be building this out, however the town decides to fund it, that the developer just wants to know that the road is going to be built out as considered.
I will say that the board's expectation was that the money was going to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and used for this purpose as necessary, which is why there was a, you know, there was a vote put on it, there was, you know, come back to us and ask, don't just spend this on something. So, you know, I would hope that a good chunk of, not all of it, could come from there so they don't have to slow down at all. You know, we've already appropriated, it's already sitting there, so I, you know, I'm sort of, you know, that's my, that was my, our expectation as a board when we voted that.
But to the point is, that however the funding comes, I think if we can tell the developer that it'll be at the town's expense, that's, that's our first decision, I think. I would be in favor of that.
Well, I actually feel like there should be some contribution from the developer because they're not providing a parking space per bedroom, and these on-street parking spaces, which will add to the cost of the overall road and are needed probably to service this development, I think that there could...
To your point.
Part of that cost could come.
To your point, following your point, one of the discussions we had was limiting each unit to one vehicle, and if you did that, you, you know, and you monitored that and enforced that, you would then not, you know, then this would be more than sufficient. If you don't put any limitation on how many cars every unit can have, they might take up every single one of these and every single spot on weight drive every day. So, that was sort of, that was something we talked about in the RFP process, and it was something I thought was going to be in place.
We have a parking plan that we're asking the, the planning board to vote on tomorrow, which is, and remember, we originally had one per unit as part of the 64, and there's the, the most vocal concern that we've had from the various boards in discussions have been, what about the parking? And if there is public parking on the street, it couldn't be up to the developer to have a private citizen regulate where they park their street on a public way. That would really be a, I mean, a town responsibility. I would say that considering available public parking as an offset for the parking requirement, and then saying, we don't want your tenants to park there are sort of competing concepts in the special permit process. So, what we're understanding is that because of, you know, it's a high-cost area, you're going to have multiple workers per family, you're going to have elder children that can't afford to move out, that are going to be working and living maybe, you know, into their twenties and, and in some cases beyond, and they're going to have vehicles, and we're trying to provide ride share and, and car share opportunities and, and a lot of bicycle sheds. I think we've got room for over 60 bicycles and, and cover, in addition to basement storage as well as scooters. So, we're trying to encourage that lifestyle, but the pushback has been, you know, make sure there's enough parking for everyone, and I think that's one of the big concerns from the police department is, you know, they, people will park regardless of what you say they can or can't do, and then they're illegally parked and it becomes, they get calls and it becomes a public safety nuisance, and there's just a push to make sure that we find every nook and cranny to create as much legal parking as possible, not to mention that you, all these lots up here are all planned for, for build-out as well as these down here, so it's, it's something that we need to look at for the future. And if this road is extended, you have a, a maintenance facility that's planned up here, they'll be use this road off of the public safety lot, and then I believe the planning building is a much larger, hopefully commuter lot slash bus, you know, other municipal uses up there. So, this entire area is not, you know, this is not just for, we're not looking for exclusive parking rights out here. We just want to be part of the mix in terms of, you know, where the demand comes, because people need to be able to come home. It's not, if I have to walk seven minutes to get to my apartment at 2:00 in the morning after my, my bartending shift, that's okay as long as I know I'm going to be able to park and come home and go to bed at the end of my busy day. It'd be better if I could park right in front of my unit, but I at least need to know there's someplace I'm going to be able to park and be able to come home. So, I think the idea of just saying, hey, look, this is the space you have and you can't park anywhere else is, is setting the project up to fail, and it shouldn't be, I can't afford to do anything for the street. I mean, this isn't, this is already, you know...
And that's, and I guess you misunderstand what I'm saying. My understanding was that, you know, as part of a lease, you could say, you're allowed one space in this 75 lot, and that's your space, and that you, and I'm not saying you monitor on the street, but my understanding was that you would monitor those spaces and make sure that your people were parking in your spaces.
Oh, yeah.
And that they didn't have two or three vehicles, because the reality is if we, you know, one of the biggest complaints that we get as selectmen is, are we going to be building something that's going to put another 100 vehicles, another 150 vehicles here? And then when we build out the rest of this, are we going to add another 150, 200 vehicles? And where are they all going to go? And so, you know, part of what, what I have to do when I hire my employees for the summer is make sure that I have a mix of people and I don't have 50 cars. You know, it won't fit on my property, and it's, it's bad for the island.
So, you, so the, the same point was brought up in the coordinated review by Lieutenant McVicker, which is a great point, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mark, but I think the intent is that every unit will be furnished essentially a permit for the, the onsite lot, so you are guaranteed of, you know, there will be a space available for you there on the site, not an assigned space per se, but that kind of concept.
So, what happens if someone's having a party and six other cars pull in and park there, and they don't have permits? It's, you know, it just, it's sort of, I almost think they should have an assigned, one assigned spot.
Well, that was actually what Lieutenant McVicker had brought up, yeah.
Yeah, I, when you have assigned spots, just from a planning perspective, it is like having fewer spots, because especially in a community like this, where you have mixed incomes come and, and people with mixed kind of jobs, you have a lot of off-peak parking demand, so if you can't let people shuffle around and just take available spaces, then it's, I don't know what the percentage is, but it's, it's, it's a big number in terms of the effective number of available spaces at any one time. Visitor parking will be an issue, you know, this is, this is our best response to our understanding of what the town wanted to fit on a pretty small lot with 64 units in the parking. We can do, you know, we even looked at underground parking as options, but it weren't, it, it's not a very pedestrian, pedestrian-friendly site because you have ingress, egress, and it would just never work from a HDC perspective, and it's extremely expensive. I think that if these parking spaces aren't for visitors and guests of the people that live in this neighborhood, I'm not sure who they're for, is, you know, I think that's, that's the whole purpose of, of the on-street parking.
And I, and I think that that's sort of missing the point, and I think there's going to be a lot of other people who are going to be competing for those on-street spaces.
Well, we have a committee in this parking pattern, just so you're aware, that we, we sized it to 45 spaces, and we've included double space parking cutouts for driveways for each of the lots. So, we've looked at your lots to make sure that we've removed from that parking pattern enough space for driveways, so it's not to say that the whole neighborhood can only accommodate 45 more parking spaces. It's 45 in addition to what you can actually get on individual lots, if that's helpful.
So, back to the point on who's going to pay for it?
Yeah, I think inevitably... Yeah, I think inevitably that this development is going to use a lot of these on-street parking and there's not going to be any contribution. Is that what I'm hearing?
My only question was, shouldn't we have negotiated at the very start when the RFP went out? Is it too late to then come back to the developer and say, now you have to pay for the road if we had committed?
Did we commit to that?
What does the RFP say on that?
From, sorry. It, it's in the informational, there was, there was a session on this and it was, it's been clear that that is a public road and that the town would put that together. So I think, I think it does change it.
Okay.
I think that, you know, the, once we get an estimate for that, that section, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund could be approached for this and they have to get your permission to expend that money. So hopefully there can be a proposal. The chairman of the, of the trust is here, maybe he has.
I, I would say, there was, oh, sorry, Brian Sullivan, I'm the new chair of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Some time ago, there was discussion about funds appropriated from this, from the board and the development of the Six FGR property. There's no proposal in front of us at the time for cost or anything like that. I don't, we, we recently awarded a grant to Habitat for Humanity, which will be coming to the board for approval as a portion of some of the funds that you requested us to come look for in this vicinity. And that's an opportunity to create housing units. I don't know that building a road or paying for a road is generally our board's housing creation use. It may be better funded somewhere else where we can use the money to actually create beds for heads. But if something's in front of us, we'll absolutely take a look at.
Yeah, the, the problem I'm having is the, when I sat here with a different group of people a couple of years ago, I was personally completely in favor of just funding the trust fund. But there were other board members who expressly did not want to fund at that type of a level without a very, a significant portion going towards contributing to the development of this road. So if there's no money coming from the developer, there's going to have to probably be a more significant portion coming out of that trust fund money. And hopefully we'll be able to replenish it or, I mean, or find more town funding elsewhere. But I just, I don't want to lose sight of what a past board wanted.
Right.
And completely disregard it.
That was very clear.
It was, it was very adamant.
That was the only way, because you and I are on the same side of that, that was the only way we were going to get that passed, the million dollars.
I mean, I can remember standing right here when I was on the trust fund and Chairman DeCosta starting the discussion by, we might as well vote now, I'm totally against this. And he did a 180 on the understand, very clear understand, I agree with you both, the very clear understanding that the intent of the board at the time was, this is a million that was being set aside to the extent a portion was needed to facilitate things over here. So that, I mean, we can all go back and watch the tape, it's, it was crystal clear to me at the time, yeah.
Even within the Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
I'm just reciting the fa, I'm just reciting the facts, but I.
It was clear direction.
What I, I, I think, I think an important thing is that, that, you know, the trust has ongoing work. And so if money is being used in, for a certain purpose, for good purposes, and, and the road would serve the Habitat project that the chair mentioned as well, as this and other things, that, you know, they're obviously very focused on being able to be, you know, do more in the future. And of course, that's, ties into the work behind trying to get the bill passed at the legislature and so on and so forth, but, so.
And most of the Six FG conversation has happened before my time on the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And I think that it's something where it's a combination of this board changing, that makeup changing, that there hasn't been a discussion. The last time we spoke about it, it was whether or not the developers would be coming to us for money. And we didn't want to support that, we wanted them to do it on their own. And since then, there hasn't been a discussion, not that there wouldn't be. I think the general consensus would be that we'd be more supportive of actual housing creation. But I think again, if this is something that needs to be carried through and discussed again, it just needs to be brought up because it has been lost, I think, in translation and the shifting of people on boards.
So just to come back to the memo again, it, the, you know, the developer, as Andrew pointed out, you know, it was, you know, the developer's never had an expectation of paying for the actual town road construction. So they are, you know, simply wanting to reaffirm that however the town does pay for it, that it is intending to build out this road.
Do we have consensus on that?
Okay.
I support six.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So the item number seven is in the event zoning by, this is, just, in the event zoning by law, Section 1398D is not revised in 2017 to allow for clustering density when developing multiple lots provisions to the internal lot lines separating Lot 83 from Lot 84. And the event adjustments are required in order to coordinate the final design with workforce rental community requirements under zoning by law, Section 1398D, such that the density is evenly distributed between the lots. I mean, this is really kind of a technical requirement. This, there is a article that is part of the special town meeting this fall that has the approval recommendation of both the planning board and the finance committee. And if it does pass at the special town meeting, it would address this issue. If it didn't, then there's an alternate, just simply to do with the, the density and where the lot lines happen to fall in this plan.
Okay.
Okay.
Is that?
That seems reasonable.
Yeah, okay. And then finally, to the extent required, cause to be filed with the MIPA Office of the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection, all filings, including an amended ENF and/or a SEIR or an EIR necessary to authorize the expansion modification of the affordable housing component of the project approved by the MIPA Office under file number 14362 as it relates to the PSL and adjacent town-owned lots. So when this entire property was originally designed and permitted, there were certain representations or aspects included in the original MIPA application that I believe was done by Deputy Chief Gibson, may have led that effort. And so it encompasses the entire parcel that the town owns here. And so it may need to be updated for the current planned use as it varies to some degree from a different but similar housing, et cetera, use originally submitted. And we're in the process of trying to make a determination with them whether something further is, is required, so.
I would think it would be.
It may, or.
Are you saying the, the town is responsible for the funding of that? Is that the developer going to be doing it, or is that the town going to do it, or?
Yeah. That effort is, would really be handled by town staff and through existing budgets, but yes.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
Great.
Yeah.
So I think we've gotten to.
So what did you hear us say? Let's just go back and summarize.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for that, I appreciate that. So I heard that the board is, and I haven't heard an exception from anyone along the way, so I'm going to say unanimous if that's all right. But the board has been unanimously supportive of the item number one. If, with respect to the boundary line fence and trying to come to a workable solution with the public safety entities on where that fence actually falls, such that path in the vein that we talked about tonight could be included in landscaping and so forth, that the board is supportive of that concept and obviously details to be worked out.
But not necessarily linking it to the 20 feet, so.
Not necessarily, no, absolutely not linking to the 20 feet. And also exploring the idea of the fence being actually next to the parking lot is one of the positive. And checking everything with town council, thank you, Erica. Anything else with item one? Item two, heard support for the fire access off of Tacoma across Lot 67, 68. The, heard support for the customary utility-type easements with respect to 77, 78, and 80. Item four, we eliminated B and C and really reaffirmation of item number one in the way 4A is constructed. In item number five, we eliminated B and heard support for the concept of 5 and 5A. Similarly, heard affirmation that the town intends to build out the road lot 80 as described and to name it. And that we understand the town is working on how that actually gets funded. Then lot, item seven, it seemed logical as well as lot eight, or excuse me, as well as item eight. So is that a fair summary?
Yep.
Yeah.
Great.
And I just, for the record, my only concern is, is two or three vehicles per dwelling and not addressing that in some manner would be a huge mistake. And I just want that on the record that my, you know, we, we specifically supported this because it's in the urban area, it's in the town area, it's serviced by bus routes, it's, it's, you know, all those things. People are going to get a great deal to live here, it's going to be a great place to live. But we, you know, there's got to be some give and take. And sort of building something that is three vehicles for, you know, 180 cars here would be a huge mistake and irresponsible on the part of the town. And I just want that on the record. I'd be really disappointed if we do something that crazy.
I think I'd agree with that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, I, that was what I thought was going to happen if, you know, and I, I don't know what the plan is and I'm not going to tell you guys how to do jobs. But I think if we just go unlimited, we will have a huge problem, we won't be able to build out the rest of this.
They probably need to put something in their lease and maybe the three-bedroom units get two cars. But those on-street parking spaces probably will need to have a time limitation, like their one-hour or two-hour parking or something, so that they really are just for visitors. Short-term, not people's permanent parking spots.
I mean, if, if you put constraints around it, people will find other alternatives. And one of them may be only to have one car. So unless, until we do that.
And, and I think that we're also committed to try and figure, to figure out your own bus service. So there's more reliable alternatives.
Right, right. Okay, so thank you.
I just want that on the record.
Yeah, yeah, noted, absolutely.
And can we, can we name the road Black Drive?
Oh.
Just throwing it out there. I know, I know it's not our purview, but suggestion.
It is your purview. With your county.
Not on the agenda for tonight.
When you put on your other hat.
We should have a, maybe we'll have a lottery or maybe ask the school to come up with a little, you know.
Well, thank, thank you all very much for the discussion and the support.
We'll need to finalize the funding for the road and the name soon.
Whoever we name it for pays for it.
I will say that the. Maybe we could do like a lot.
The cost away.
People could bid to put their name on it.
The planning office actually has a list of names. And whenever people come to the Board of Selectmen to name an unnamed way, we always refer them to that list first to try to use those names.
Oh, there's a list?
There's a list of names.
Maybe we can circ, circulate that to the board to get them thinking.
Be good practice for Jason, what he's picking a name for.
Now we're going to have an update from the Affordable Housing Trust.
Brian Sullivan, the newly appointed chair of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Thank you for having me, this is my first meeting, so bear with me. I was noticed, I think, on Thursday afternoon that I was coming, so with a long weekend in between, I'll do what I can. I basically would like to throw it back to you for questions, but I think there was some level of kind of what's been happening at the trust. The last few months have been very active. A new program, which I think some of you have heard about, which is a loan program, closing cost assistance. We are servicing families between 80 and 150% on closing properties. Again, it's a loan and, and a lot of this has happened over in Satcham's Path. Recently, we've awarded nine families at 80%, five at 100%, and nine at 150%. I don't know if you have your pen ready. The dollar amounts up to 100 was 210,000. And up to 150, or excuse me, between 100 and 150 was 135,000. Some of those funds came from different places, CPC, Board of Selectmen appropriations from past years. We recently had Habitat for Humanity in. They were requesting a grant of $150,000 for development of properties in this area of the Six Fair Ground project. We will be passing that up to this board in hopes of approval from a portion of the million dollars, which was restricted in the original award.
Can I go back?
Yeah.
Yeah, on the first, so the, the loan program, what's the interest rate on those loans?
It's a, it's a no-interest loan.
For how long? What's the term of the loan?
It's to, it's to the end of their ownership. So at the transfer of property, the loan will be repaid. So the money, the money's held with the property basically.
Okay, my suggestion, there should be some interest on that, otherwise it's basically free money. You know, if someone holds it for 20 or 30 years with the, Brian could give us the numbers off the top of his head, but the, you know, cost of living increases, you're basically, you're basically giving money away.
Right, looking at CPI increase or something like that.
Because what you want, this is to be self-sufficient, you want it sustainable so that when you come out 20 years from now and that money comes back, it's actually going to be able to do something. If it comes back and it's, you know, it's worth, you give them $10,000, it comes back, it's worth 1,000.
Right.
We've just, you know, we've lost the ability to do it. And I don't think it's unreasonable if it's cost of living because it's going to be when they sell the property anyway, it's a lien or.
Right, right.
So we had a lot of discussions about that, about whether to add, and it was the consensus of the group that, that, you know, people were really, it was difficult for them to put all the dollars in place to, and, and it was, and they were very heavily borrowed on these, on their mortgage. And that we did not, we felt pretty strongly that we were, there was a no interest. And this, we got some guidance from the local banks too. And I don't know if that was one of their conditions in terms of, because of debt, from a debt service perspective, they had, you know, if they're, if it's, so I think they were, some people were really at those limits. And that was maybe been another factor, so.
Well, I've got a different, I have a different hat on.
I understand.
I've been on the bank board and I've got my hat on for the council.
I understand, but I, that's what, at least when I was on the board.
I think that's a reasonable discussion to have, yeah, for sure. I will come back, just to update memory that some time ago, we came to the board, I think the number was $300,000 we were seeking originally for the development of Lot 90 off of Wait Drive. And that was for a house move that was a structure the Nantucket Yacht Club had. Unfortunately, due to time constraints, permitting, et cetera, that did not happen. So we'll be looking for other opportunities like that in the near future. So at the moment, that's kind of my wrap-up for you, unless there's questions that.
But just in your, in your little pro forma, and you, you gave the numbers, but these all, so the down payment assistance reimbursement, is that where the dollars would go that?
So the, the numbers that I offered, Jim, were the allocations that we put a. So the numbers that I offered, Jim, were the allocations that we put aside for those closings. There's a lot of closings actually happening this week, but between now and the end of December, there's 22 closings. So what we've done is, we've funded up to an amount, knowing that the actual closings will be less.
Right, I remember that, okay. But you don't have any, there's nothing in this report that speaks to the amount.
No, because that report's only showing actual dollars out, and since the closings haven't happened yet, those checks haven't necessarily been written.
But there have been some. We, okay. So there have been some disbursements.
I think the first was to Katie Cabral.
Yeah, there were three, yeah. So those should appear on here? So anyway, so. And what were the two numbers again, how much you've allocated or?
So the 80 to 100% was 210,000 and the below 150, or from 100 to 150 was 135,000.
Okay.
And that's what's been set aside at the moment, the actual figure, the expectation will be significantly less once the actual closing costs come across the table. For example, the land bank is now waiving land bank fees, so some of the closing statements that were coming to us had that included, and so it had to go back to be reallocated, to be taken off. Linda's worked very hard with some of the attorneys on items like, forgive me, title insurance and their fees, and then working with surveyors to bring down the survey costs. So we're working as hard to work on the individual line items as possible to bring down the actual amount out of the gate as low as possible, so we can continue to feed the program.
And in terms of Board of Selectmen action, you know, I don't know if I would, it's up to the board, but do you, are we going to ask that these, this program be patched? So we say how much of, you know, and in that case, it looks like it'd be over 50,000? Or do we say, well, none of them are over 15, so they can do 1,000 of them, so.
So my.
That's a really question for this board.
If you read the act that created us, sorry, I have a cold. If you read the act that created us, it is any one individual over 100,000 has to come to you. We could theoretically do 1,000 of these, less than 100,000. And as he pointed out, the amount that he just quoted you is going to be significantly less. Give you an example, the one I did today, processed today, that's on your warrant for this evening, for a particular individual and his family, we gave him up to 15,000, but it actually came in at 9,200. We had another one that was 15,000 and came in at like 6,800 because they had one of the cheaper units. So those are top end, but any individual over 100,000, we have to come back and ask you, which is why we're coming back with the Habitat, which is at 150, which is coming out of the million. We've used, we've used funding.
That was the spirit.
Well, I think there's two different, you're talking about the act and anything over 100, I understand that.
One individual over 100.
I understand, but the vote of the board on the money that was placed in this time was, it was for it to come back, you know, so it was sort of, it was understood it would be coming back.
We're not using, there's three pockets of money right now, four. There's what we had before. We have a piece of property on fairgrounds, we're waiting for a land bank, that's about 275 coming back. We had, I don't know, a couple hundred thousand from before, hang on. The 400,000 that you gave us, that CPC gave us, is going to the 80 to 100%. The 100s to the 150s is coming out of the 500 you gave us last year. The 150 for Habitat would be coming out of the million. If we spend one penny of the million, we have to come back here to ask you to spend one penny. So there's various restrictions on various types of money that we have.
And that's the point I'm making, just on that one, that one thing was, has the restrictions from the board on that time?
The 150.
Well, the 1 million, we have the restrictions on that.
Yeah, the million has a restriction for the first dollar, and then the way we're looking at it was, there was, I think there's 209 in previous funds, 500 from last assessment, so there's 724,000, which is where we're pulling the 135 from in increments less than 100,000, right? And then the, we're looking at the pot from CPC, which those funds have to be used for housing initiatives that serviced 100% or lower, and we're using that pot to fund the 210 of boards.
So I just appreciate having maybe a Brian and a Tucker conversation and to get, so that we have all that sorted out and where, how much is really there and not, you know, it's tough for Brian to be put on the spot in terms of actual dollars, but, and come back and send that report to the board.
Yeah, and I think that this is, that this initiative is a great initiative. I'm just hoping to see something more from the trust fund soon that's going to create new housing. I mean, these, it's amazing to help all of these families finalize their Satcham's Path and so forth.
I absolutely agree with you, Don.
I don't want to eat away so much that there's not enough left to do a bigger project.
I agree, 100% I agree. And the opportunities that I've seen from my other seat not related to this, my professional job, and you know, any opportunities that we see coming along, for the math to work, they have to be at enough scale to be able to drive down the costs. And what that means is larger chunks of property, which means larger purchases, which means more funding from the town and the board, until we're lucky enough, if the housing bill goes through, and then we can be self-funded. But up until that point, it is difficult to be in a position of negotiating on any purchase with our current balance or considering some portion of that million dollars, which we don't know, you know, where it's going or what it's approved for.
And just from being on the board, it's also, when the market, you have an opportunity in the market, the, you know, it's hard to respond in a timely basis.
It's a short window, there was an, what I would have considered a missed opportunity on Bartlett Road for a number of lots that went under contract to a private individual, but unfortunately, we weren't in a position funded or in a cycle in the funding process close enough that we could have had a real conversation with that seller. And that's, that's the tricky place, we're in this conundrum where we have a well-seated board that's very thoughtful and well-intended, and we want to, you know, get to a place that we can do stuff. We're all hoping on this housing bill, but that still has a lot of runway to go, and I too want to, you know, get to the place. Working with Habitat and trying to get them on track is one way to get some housing, you know, heads and beds, as we'll say.
It has to be, I used to look at it from having, having moved houses and developed houses, et cetera, a little bit, I just look at the, I look at Habitat and the per-unit cost and the subsidy, the per-unit subsidy from the town, before we even do this subsidy, is substantial. And I just look at it, and I think there's got to be another way, and there's got to, there's got to be a way to do this that starts to bring a revenue stream back somehow, whether it's, you know, through land trusts or some other manner, there's got to be some way to get a revenue stream back into the Housing Trust Fund, so there's more to be done. You know, if we're going to count on it just being town meeting and just being the voters, I don't think we're ever going to address it at the level it needs to be. I think there has to be some sort of way to, you know, to make money from it. People make a living doing this. How come the town gives up the land and still has to throw millions and millions of dollars toward it? Just seems a little, it's, I don't know.
It's hard, the spread between, you know, market rate and affordability is the gap that we need to make up the difference, that's the hard part.
Yeah, but when you give the land and then you build the road, and then you put some more money in, you know, I look at that and I go, wait a minute, where did it all go?
I, I know.
You know what I'm talking about.
I know exactly what you're talking about.
All right, so the other thing I look at, and just since you're here, is what other things can we do that don't necessarily cause dollars? Are there, you know, are there incentives put in place? One example someone gave me was, right now, I think if you, and he might be wrong, but he said, geez, if you covenant, you can covenant your lot and sell off the lot, but then you can't do anything on the lot, your own lot. And so, you know, you can't put a tertiary, you can't put a secondary because you've given the covenant.
I don't think that's correct.
You can put tertiary, you just can't.
They would be allowed a tertiary dwelling as long as they're occupying the market rate property.
So they still could put a tertiary on their original lot?
Yeah, you could sell your cottage and then have a cottage under 650 square feet.
Right, all right, so you can, okay. So his, well, so his suggestion was be allowed to do that, but you can, so.
But I'm thinking. Have him sign up, we'll put, give you his name, I'll call him tomorrow.
No, but things, I'm just thinking, usually, are there discussions about those sort of things? Yeah, I think those are important because we kind of want it spread around the island and it would be great to not have to, you know, to be able to do it more quickly and to find ways like that where people go, great, I can, you know, I can, I get a break. We've given a break for, you know, some of the initial fees if something's kept in a family or affordable. Is there anything like that that you guys could suggest that would help us?
I'm sure they're talking about.
Yeah, there's a, there's a couple ideas at the table that we're trying to work through to get them to a place and participate in the free market, yet turn units into covenant restricted and at the right level.
Yeah.
You know, with the eye on always trying to raise our shy accounted for numbers.
Yeah, and we just want to stay in the loop and do what we can to support the efforts.
Well, this was much nicer standing here than I was worried about three minutes ago, so I'm happy to come back any time.
So do you foresee another request at town meeting for additional funding?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, absolutely. I believe that we're making a request through, forgive me for having to look back at my notes. So originally, there was a request made to the Capital Program Committee, but we were encouraged to redirect that through Free Cash, and the request is based on the average calculation of, forgive me, if the housing bill was in place over the course of the last 10 years through a down market and a high market and average it out to $1,275,000 to help fund us to be able to go out, participate in the marketplace. So the short answer is yes.
So that's the request, 1.27, or was it 1.3, I think is what I saw?
I haven't seen it, I haven't seen it on paper, but I was told, 1275 is what I was told.
Okay.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Madam Chair, the next item is a request to the board to authorize town administration to execute the SRF documents in connection with the sewer system infiltration inflow analysis. We've done this in the past.
So we, if everyone's okay with this, we just need to reference this motion?
Yes.
Whoever makes the motion.
Are you going to read it or?
Do you want me to read it?
I don't think we need, I just, I move to adopt.
Based on?
This, the SRF funding motion and as outlined in the packet and screen it above us.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Selectmen's reports. CPC is continuing their review. Anything else?
I'll just make, mention one thing, there was a, the Civic League put on a really nice conversation Monday night, and we had Julian Seer and Dylan Fernandez, our state rep, our state senator and state rep, and it really was, it really got into a public policy conversation, and very thoughtful questions from the audience on medical marijuana, marijuana, opiate, opiate addiction prevention, housing. So from one perspective, I felt the things we were thinking about in terms of our strategic plan were really reflected in the kinds of conversations that came up. And the other thing, and I don't, I'm not trying to, you know, we're all fortunate to have those two, they're not only bright, but they're hardworking, and Julian has, you know, a lot of experience with the Department of Public Health and, and it just, it was very, it was, we had conversations about using title for renewable energy and what our goals are to be 100% renewable within X timeframe, so it was, it was a great conversation, it was on TV too, so Jason was there for part of it too.
Yeah, I echo that, it was really, it was very interesting. I also liked the fertilizer legislation that they're trying to push through that would give local control of what fertilizers can be used. Right now, we don't have any say, but that's what they're trying to do at the state level, to give us control. But it was good. That's all I got.
Well, now we have a public hearing for an HDC appeal. So there's a general procedure where we open the public hearing, and the appellant's going to state his or her case, reason for the appeal, the historic district commission will define its position, there will be brief rebuttals to follow, public comment, and then the board can ask questions before we close the public hearing and ultimately make a decision. Okay, so we're opening the public hearing.
Hi, Lucy Dillon, and I understand this is not to discuss stuff that went on at the HDC meeting. I'm appealing this because of, I don't think that protocol was properly followed, especially the demolition policy as set forth in the standards for approval. All of my explanations was, I think, fairly clearly set out in your packet, and maybe the best thing for you to do is to ask me any questions. This is the most historic structure in Quays that is in jeopardy. It's in fairly good condition, it's been occupied or rented every summer, and I just think that because of the significance of this structure, that it should get a fair chance in front of the HDC. I'm trying to keep it short for you.
Anyone want to ask a question now or wait until the HDC stated?
Yeah, I'll reserve my questions after, I'd like to hear from the HDC.
Are you representing?
Sure.
It's your, time for your rebuttal, or your, not your rebuttal, your position, statement of position.
And here's a, just before we get going, one thing I thought about is we have, we have the, what do you call it, the applicant, whatever we call, Lucy. Appellant, there you go, I knew that was a fancy word. She states out her position and it's in writing and it's here, and I don't really see that from the HDC in here. And in the future, I think it would be helpful if that was written out, you know, what you're, you see what I'm saying, for the record, I think it would be important to say, you know, this is what we believe and here's why. And I just think it's, you know, I just think more of that, the more that we memorialize these things, I think the better we all will be.
Noted.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So I'm Ray Paul, and I am the chairman of the HDC, and I'm here to represent the HDC's perspective on this. I guess the first thing I'd like to do is just address the three main bullet points that Lucy has outlined in her complaint. The first of which, and do you all have this document in front of you? Okay, so the first of which says the process and standards of the, and I'm assuming it's the demolition policy that she's referring to, it says the process and standards of the policy were not followed, and then references Appendix C of Building with Nantucket in Mind. So I'd like to just quote a few things from that, from that demo policy. So demolition policy, demolition of structures, except as otherwise provided herein, no certificate of appropriateness shall be issued for the demolition of any protected structure or portion thereof. My emphasis on the word protected. There is also in Appendix C, a series of definitions, and there is one for protected structures that reads, "Any significant structure which the commission determines is in the public interest to preserve or rehabilitate rather than demolish." So it is at the board's discretion as to whether a building is protected. The board did not give that designation to this building, so that's item number one. Item number two is.
Before we go off that, Ray. So is that the same as a significant contributing structure definition? Do you consider the protected the same as significant and contributing?
Protected, as I understand it, means that significant and contributing, there are three designations, significant and contributing is sort of the highest, then there's contributing, and then there's non-contributing. So I'm going to parse this a little bit. Obviously, the three bricks are significant. Obviously, the three bricks are significant, historically significant contributing buildings. Okay, they fit that description. If someone were to approach, if someone were to come into our board with an application to demolish the middle brick, our board has the ability to create the designation for that to be a protected structure, so that all of the language for demolition of protected structures would come into play. So even though I don't believe yet that anyone has come in with that sort of thing and that no designation has been created by this board for the middle brick, we would certainly do that in this case.
So is the designation of protected come as a result of an application, or do you go around?
Of an application.
So it's not like you've gone around and said, well, this is protected, that one's protected?
No. Okay. It's on a case-by-case basis. Clearly, no one has come to us with an application to demolish one of the bricks, but if they ever did, that would be our, our defense.
Can I just know one thing? I mean, there are a series of forms that were created by the Preservation Institute in--
Yes.
--a number of years ago that do lay out some buildings that are individually significant and so forth.
Yes. So individually significant, again, is what, if you were to look up one of the bricks on that, it would be individually significant. Yes. Okay. So the second point has to do with, "The commission failed to provide notice to persons interested in historic preservation." Well, there is language about notification. However, it's supposed to be done so in writing, and I don't believe that was done. So I'm not sure that I understand what the nature of that complaint is. Perhaps Lucy can rebut that one for me. Third, "Application materials were not available to the public to review in a timely manner." John Haddon, who is responsible for taking care of things for the HCC at a staff level, has the whole file. My recollection is that at the first hearing, and there were two hearings, right? The first hearing, Linda Williams, who is representing this for the applicant, brought in a, literally a tome of historic information on this building. And I said, "If you're looking for an approval tonight, you're not going to get it because our board needs to digest this." And my recollection also at the time was that Lucy, who was present, was, was provided with a copy of that same document. So that, she, she was given that sort of information, and as far as John Haddon can recall, and he has the information to back it up, all of the information was available down at the, down at the town building, and any member of the public could go in and access that at any time. So further, I'd like to say that, you know, we all went into this, the board went into this knowing that this was a historic structure. I have been through the structure myself about a year ago, and it's in terrible shape, to be very honest with you. And I think that the board was really relieved that there was somebody out there that actually could do right by this building. I always like to use the expression, "Don't let the perfect be the enemy of the good." I mean, what they were proposing was not a Williamsburg reproduction of this house, but, so they took some additive pieces off and so forth, and they moved it on the same site, off, off of its present location. And the board felt that the massing, the historic massing was retained. They had some things on the proposal that we objected to, they removed them. So we felt, going out of this, we felt that we had done our due diligence, and that the net result was that the historic building was going to remain, and that, you know, it wasn't going to suffer by demolition, by neglect.
Here's a question, I guess, on that regards. Will there be any, so they're going to take this, they're not demoing it? It's not going to be demolished? It's going to be moved?
It is not going to be completely demolished. There are two, have you been out to see it?
Yeah, I looked at it last night.
So there's sort of the main gable, which is the original piece, and then there's these two appended, yeah, there it is, right there. There's these appended side wings. Yeah, I think it's pretty straightforward, but these side wings, and Linda can speak to this really, but these were additive masses, so they are coming off and becoming porches. So the overall massing of this will appear very similar to what you see right there. Windows are being saved and restored and so forth. So it's, it's not a cavalier sort of approach to a historic renovation.
Here's a question. Will the, will this is moved? Will there be another building?
You'll be rebutting.
You'll come back again?
A rebuttal in a second.
No, but, but I thought we weren't going to be discussing what went on at the HDC meeting, but just the, my appeal was about the way it was handled to get it to the HDC meeting. Isn't that correct? I mean, that's what it said in the, in the, in your packet. It's not a new hearing matter, new hearing of the matter already heard by the HDC.
And I'm not, and my questions aren't necessarily to hear, I'm one, I'm trying to figure out what the, I'm trying to figure out, I'm not trying to hear it to, for the value of this, Lucy. I'm trying to understand the process and what is happening there.
Okay.
You know, is, you know, look, one of the things I, you know, so I don't know if that's--
I think we're just trying to understand the whole picture.
Yeah, I'm trying to understand the picture and what the motivations may be and what, you know.
And I guess, and I could be wrong, and I'd ask town council to weigh in, but my view of our role is, is to not be talking about, "Do we take this off, and why didn't you do this," and bada, 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 but is to, to really understand, was there, was there action arbitrary and capricious? And, and that's why I'm not asking questions about the project in and of itself. So I don't know, George, if you have--
Good evening. George Pucci from Town Council's office. That's correct. I mean, you're, the, the legislation provides in Section 11, appeals may be taken to the Board of Selectmen by any person agreed by the ruling of the Historic District Commission. So Ms. Dillon says that she's aggrieved, you know, by the, by the ruling of the HDC. She brought the appeal here. What you choose to consider is within your purview, but absolutely, the, the standard of review that you have is whether the ruling of the HDC was arbitrary and capricious. And that means it's not based on grounds as reasonable minds would consider reasonable to support the ruling. If you do find that, you know, it's hard to make that ruling unless you know a little bit about what was presented to the HDC, what they looked at in answering those questions. So you're not rehearing the matter, but you are, it is within your purview to ask them, you know, details into their reasoning to how they reached that decision. And certainly, you know, looking at the diagram that you were looking at is relevant to that consideration.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, George.
Would you like an answer to your question?
Yeah, so what, so in the scheme of things, this is moving down on the lot?
Correct.
Is there something going in this place, in this footprint?
I would assume so, yes.
But you haven't seen that? That hasn't been brought to you yet?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Is that your--
That's my presentation.
Okay, you'll have a chance to rebut. We're going to take rebuttals before public comment. Oh, John, did you want to say something?
Sure.
Sorry.
John Haddon, Historic District Complaints Coordinator. So I guess the few things that I read, which I'm a little confused about, is that Ms. Dillon came to the office to review the application and all the material in it.
I don't think we need all that.
And that it wasn't available, the historic information. It was all date stamped July 6th, which is actually, was a Thursday. Applications are due on a Wednesday, but I can, I was going over the application--
Linda, I got to hear John.
I was going over the application with Ms. Williams on Wednesday. She sent out her butter notification on Wednesday when it's required of each application when it comes into our office. She gave me the necessary paperwork at the time, site plan, a locust map, her plan for the demolition, the moving, the addition part of it. We had talked about what the cost of the application would be, just because those get a little confusing when stuff's coming off and stuff's being added on, and our fee schedule based on that. So it sat on my desk Wednesday night, and on Thursday, I gave it to the front for them to stamp it in and check in the application. So this is a very common practice. I call probably 10 applicants every new business week to submit pictures, better site plans, you name it. So it's not uncommon that I was still going through the application on Wednesday night when it came in. I should correct Chairman Poehl. The applicant had so much historic information, which is in here, and it was a ton to digest by anyone, so they were distributed to the commissioners before the meeting, I would say Thursday or Friday or that weekend, for them to review in advance, which is often a good thing in a situation like this when it's a bigger or more sensitive project, and there's a lot more material presented to the commission, so they could be familiar with this before they go into Tuesday night. Even then, I think it was too much to digest, and as Chairman Poehl said, and I remember at the meeting saying, "If you're looking for an approval tonight, it's not going to happen because we still need to go through all this information." So that's about all I have to say. I guess I'm a little confused by the, the appeal about the, the process of the demolition, but as far as an office end, that was it. So, and I guess you have your packets there, too. So, thanks.
The packet wasn't complete. Linda did say in one of the meetings that because of the packet was so thick that she personally delivered it to the committee members. And also, as Ray said, it, it was a tome. Isn't that an indication in itself the historic nature of this property? If it's got that much information? This is the old tea house on the hill, and it was Miriam Coffin's house. It was one of the first summer homes on the island. Thank you.
Ray, did you want to say anything before we take public comment? Okay. All right, we'll take public comment now. Steve?
Madam Chair, so Stephen Cohen, I represent the applicant who was before the HDC, not the landowner, but the purchaser. I want to note that, you know, Ms. Dillon, I appreciate that she cares about historic preservation, and I appreciate that she cares about her own neighborhood, but basically she has three legal standards, and I don't know that she's met any of them. First of all, she has not provided how she is aggrieved. She has no basis for aggriement. She's not harmed here. Okay? Usually, the aggriement is the applicant that can't do anything. She has not even suggested how she's aggrieved. Okay? Secondly, she could show a flaw in the process that is a mandatory thing that was not followed. She suggested a lot of things that I'll address in a second, but none of them are fatal flaws. And the third thing is, she could show that the decision is not based on a reasonable basis, and that it's arbitrary and capricious. And she has not suggested that, and first she didn't want to talk about it, and then she just said, "Wait, this house is so historic, it should be whatever." But the reality is, is that this is a well-reasoned decision. And so on the process, she essentially makes, you know, four arguments. She says that they didn't follow the demolition policy. Well, I think, you know, it's pretty clear that, first of all, this wasn't a demolition application, and second of all, the policy itself is not, is something that, it's a tool, and I think Chairman Poehl was clear on this, it's a tool that the HDC has to employ in special circumstances for special properties. They did not employ that tool, so those rules don't apply. And secondly, she didn't even request that, at either of the hearings, that it be employed. So to suggest that it wasn't, that the rules for it don't, weren't followed, doesn't, doesn't really hold any water. Secondly, she suggests that, oh, they didn't refer it to HSEB. Well, HSEB is, A, an advisory board of the HCC, and they don't require it to, but second of all, the process is that historic structures within the Historic District of Downtown and the Historic District of Scottsdale are what are sent to HSEB, not every old structure. And in fact, new structures that might be in the Downtown District or in Scottsdale are sometimes sent to HSEB because they're in critical locations. So the, the age of the structure is not important, it's whether or not it's a historically significant structure or location that's typically sent there. And the board, she, she could have requested at the first hearing that it go to HSEB. You know, there's, but the fact that it didn't go there is not a violation of any rule or flaw that would make the decision arbitrary and capricious. She says that the materials were not available in a timely manner. I don't understand that at all, since they were available before the hearing, at the hearing, handed to her at the hearing. She's correct that there's a ton of material, you know, more than 100 pages of material about this applicant, about this house. And what that shows is that the board had a very full picture of when they knew what they were doing. You know, there was not some decision that was made without a full, without all the information. And the, the last thing is that the board made a very thoughtful decision here. The board, the applicant came in with a request for A, and the board said, "No, we're not going to give you A, but we're going to think about B, because B will save important things." That we, it will save the main massing, the historic massing, and it will save the historic silhouette, and it will keep it in a location that's important. So the board, at the first meeting, came up with a set of criteria that they found to be important in any renovation of a structure. And then there was a renovation that was proposed, and we brought in a few different designs. And, you know, at that second meeting, the decision was made, this is an appropriate location for this site, and this was an appropriate way to alter this structure and still allow it to be, save the, the important historic massing. So I think there was a process that was properly followed. Ms. Dillon was at all the hearings and had all the information, and the commission had all the information, and the decision was, was very well reasoned. So I don't know that she has any basis for any of the three prongs of an appeal here. Thank you.
I have a question for Steve.
Just remember that he's speaking as public comment, and it's actually not supposed to become part of the argument. I just want to be careful with how this procedure is written.
Yep.
Right, not the actual applicant.
It's just a comment.
So, well, my comment is that basically everything that the chairman said and everything that town council said is correct, that the process was followed, and the legal standard is the one that Mr. Pucci laid out, and those support the application that was approved at my client's, my client's request.
Thank you.
Can I ask the question to the HCC then, once we've had public comment? Okay, I'll do it that way then.
Yes, good evening. Kevin Kuster for the appellant. I just want to point out a couple of things, just because a lawyer says it's true, it isn't true, doesn't make it true. If you go back and look at the minutes, which is Exhibit B, it says that Lucy Dillon asked if HSEB has reviewed this, was not given an answer. Mr. Cohen just stated that she was at all the hearings. She was not at the last hearing. I was there. We don't have any issue with the design of what's taken place here. The issue is that this is a very historic house. If you go back and look at the demolition policy, it doesn't just say that we're going to demolish the whole house, it says any portion thereof. This is a house that was built in 1850. There essentially, and it's been, it was set on the record by the, you know, current owner, "This is the only way that I can sell this house." So that very reason seems arbitrary to me, that this board makes a decision based, that that's the reason that this is a better place on the site. There are many houses of this age that have been asked to stay and mandated to stay in their existing locations. This house has been there since 1850. It's the oldest second, it's the oldest second summer home on the island. The, the parts that they want to remove date back to the late 1800s, early 1900s. It is classic additive massing. That's what the HDC strives for in their buildings, and here, they're asking to have it taken off so, so that something new can be built. But what's more important here, I think, to us is that just because, is to say that we have guidelines and we have a demolition policy, and then to say, "Well, we don't really have to go by it," we all lose in that. We all, you know, suffer from that. And too many things, because-- And too many things, because of, you know, reasons and issues that are not being paid attention to, we are losing the soul of the island this way. And that's the reason the HSEB exists, that's the reason there's a demolition policy, that's the reason there's all these things. When we do an appeal, we didn't hire attorneys. It's a lot of work to do it, and I would expect that we would be able to have to get our stuff, you know, in advance from the HTC as well. This is very accurate. It's the way the process went. There's a timeline. In my amateur view, it was fast-tracked through to get through and to get the approval and get the property sold. And that's not preservation, in our minds. Thank you.
Can I make one besides this? One quick comment? The policy of sending out the notices that have to be mailed the week, the Wednesday before, the week before, that has to be mailed to a Butters, should be changed to at least a month, because as we all know, with the mail that goes over to the Cape and comes back, if there's bad weather, you'd get that notice 10 days later.
George, correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is that when an application comes in, it has to be heard within 11 days?
Yeah.
Okay, that's the issue there.
We spent a lot of time, Linda Waym, for the applicant, you'll just have to bear with me here. The reason why the packets are so large is because we didn't want to hide anything. I was on the HTC for almost 20 years, and I saw a lot of bobbing and weaving and dodging on the ages of structures. We did not want to hide anything. We wanted to give the HTC members a full packet of every single thing I could dig up, including one on, one item that is out of publication and only one copy exists, I hunted it down and put, that's in your packets. And the board had everything the week before, because the packet was so large, you couldn't scan it. All of that, there were extra copies in the file at the HTC office. I checked to see if anybody had come in to review the pad, to review the file. They said Ms. Dillon was there, and they showed her the file, and she refused to look at the file. I don't know where else to go with that. But there were extra copies of the whole packet in the file for people to take a look at or copy themselves. The demo plan, Dawn and I have a lot of experience with this. We put a demo plan in the file, showing what things are going to be kept and what things are going to be removed, namely the wings. Not one side of this house had been left untouched since it was reconstructed. The original structure from the 1700s was removed, all the documentation showed it removed. One end was pulled out after 1850. Another wing was pulled out and added onto another wing. An open cook shed was enclosed where the kitchen was, it was sinking into the ground. It took seven years to find an owner, a potential owner, that was not going to try to demolish the building. He worked with the HTC. We came up with a plan. We recreated the wings so the silhouette would remain the same from the road, which is the only jurisdiction the HTC has. They took great pains in all of this. It was made, a decision was made, not by us, but by the HTC, not to send it to H-SAB because it didn't qualify, essentially. The demo plan is a smokescreen. The structure's not being demolished, parts of it are being demolished and new additions put on. The HTC sees that every single week, thousands and thousands and thousands of cases, where even in the old historic district, they came in and removed a rear addition, a later addition to most of the houses, added a mass, and constructed a new, more conforming addition with better bathrooms and better stairs or whatever. Nobody goes and goes for the demolition policy on any of those things, where you remove parts of a structure and put new additions on or recreate something. That is not something to get stuck on, and that doesn't mean the HTC is arbitrary and capricious, because they see that all the time, without going to the demolition policy. What the HTC typically looks for is a demo plan of the pieces that are coming off, where the new pieces are going on, and that was provided to the HTC. But we, as I said, we didn't want to hide anything. We wanted to make sure that if they were going to agree and give us the approval, that they had a reasoned decision, and they had every single piece of aerials and pictures and all the history from all the old books that I could come up with. And they had it, and they reviewed it, and they asked for another week to review it before they made the decision on the second meeting. Four out of the five members sitting on this had actually been to the site. Two had been to the site earlier, and two came out and spoke to the owner and reviewed the whole house, piece by piece by piece. Diane Coombs could not get out there. I provided her with 100 pictures of every single nook and cranny of this house, inside and out, so she had the virtual reality, basically.
Just remember, your public comment.
Yeah, this is public comment. So that's the name of the story. We did everything we could.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? We'll move to board questions before we close.
I have just a couple of questions for Ray. Is that fine?
Are my answers part of the argument, or am I just public comment right now? I'm just kidding.
Just trying to get an idea, again, of the thought process. Essentially, you, the board decided that the building wasn't going to be a protected building.
Correct.
That was sort of step one, and then based on that, H-SAB review wasn't necessary, based on the fact that it wasn't protected?
No, that's not necessarily correct. They're two separate things. H-SAB, I believe Mr. Cohen said it well, the H-SAB, Matikit Advisory, signed advisory, were all advisory boards that were created by our commission, to aid our commission. So the policy with regard to H-SAB, Historic Structures Advisory Board, was that when an application came into the office and it was within the old historic district as defined by our HTC maps, it was immediately sent to H-SAB for review, regardless of whether it was an old building or a new building. Anything taking place within the confines of the old historic district is by default reviewed by H-SAB. Beyond that, H-SAB is consulted if we feel the need to have their input on something, but it's not sort of a mandatory part of the process now.
Was there a little, is it that because of its location, as opposed to its actual history, that it's not protected? It's just because it falls in between those different town, it's not town, it's not Scotset, it's sort of in between protected areas?
Yes.
But I think, just to follow up, what I heard you say was, is that by not making it protected, you decided it wasn't protected, and there's a lot of unprotected towns that may have, buildings that the H-SAB or whatever may get applications. I think there, isn't the protected different than what necessarily gets sent to this advisory board?
They're very different things.
Yeah, right. I think that was, so they're not linked at all?
Not at all.
Okay.
But did you truly determine that this was an unprotected structure? Like, were you meaning it wasn't individually significant and meaning no portion of it could be changed? Or were you, was the board's determination that it was contributing, but it could have some modifications?
We allow modifications to contributing buildings. Certainly, we allow modifications and demolitions routinely to non-contributing buildings, that goes without saying. Contributing buildings, we allow modifications on a very frequent basis, depending on sort of the history of the building, its degree of sort of intactness, where it's located, frankly, and so we do allow modifications to those buildings. Now, when we get up to the category of individually significant, you know, and there are a few of those around, that's where, frankly, we have allowed modifications to the bricks, believe it or not, in the back, you know, on the newer wings, but, you know, they're given a tremendous amount of scrutiny. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I just, I think that there was a misconception that you were saying that it had no historical value.
Oh, no, absolutely not.
I wanted to clarify the way it was phrased.
If I didn't make this very clear at the beginning, we were, the entire board was absolutely cognizant of the historian, history of this building.
And it was represented that the windows will be retained?
Yes.
How much of the rest of the building is retained in the, you know, has been represented that will be retained? Like, are the floors staying, are the beams staying? You look at it, it's a beautiful old building.
It is. Now, you know, we sort of tread this line, because the HTC, as I'm sure you know, Matt, has no jurisdiction over anything inside the exterior walls. We only have jurisdiction over the exterior features. So when you sort of break that down, you're allowed to reshingle an old building, of course, you're allowed to replace rotted trim. We scrutinize windows heavily, and exterior doors, because those are features that, you know, the glass in the old windows and the sash and all that sort of thing are exterior features, they're within our purview, and we can regulate what takes place with those.
But what did they represent was going to be retained in the internal structure? Even though it's not in your purview, often it's in your minutes.
Yeah, and they did submit documentation about what walls were going to be removed and what walls would be, would remain with inside of the building. That's part of the record.
I understand, but that's not, I know it's not in the purview, but, you know, sort of, as one individual, I'm some, I'm an aggrieved party when I see, when I go down Cliff Road and I see a building lifted up, and every single door, and all the floors, and all the historic walls, and everything's gone. That, to me, is chipping away at what makes Nantucket special. I understand that's not how we interpret it now, and we can't do anything about it, but I think we have to figure out how, as a community, to do something about that, because I think it's, I think it's chipping away at what makes the island special, and eventually we're going to be Disneyland. And I think that's, you know, I don't know.
I couldn't agree more.
I know you do, and I, but I just.
No, that sort of gets outside of the purview of what we're discussing right now.
Understood.
But there is a question of enforcement. And, you know, sadly, I think that one thing that really is, we need to ramp up, is enforcement policy with respect to, our board will approve something with stipulations that certain windows are to remain, and doors are to remain, and the next thing you know, they're in a dumpster. So.
These are all really good points, but we're probably getting a little bit off track. We've got to come to a determination on whether something was done incorrectly administratively or whether the board acted in arbitrary and capricious way. So are there any other questions before we close the public hearing? Am I, did you want to say something, George?
Yeah, I wanted to clarify something.
Yeah, please.
Finished?
I think so.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify, I think all this presentation is relevant to your consideration as to whether that decision was arbitrary and capricious, including that explanation of how they treat different categories of buildings and whether they allow modifications to those. Typically, I would point out, you know, it's by no means clear that this is a quote-unquote demolition or a raising of a structure under the legislation that the HTC goes by. Under the Historic District Act, I just, there's an important point to consider is the definition of raising a structure, and that would be a demolition. Raising includes the words destroyed, demolished, and removed. And then if that definition applies, then there's a standard that the commission has to apply if there's a proposed raising of a structure, and that's also in the legislation, they would have to find that that raising is against the public interest. But there's another definition that, you know, this appears to apply more to, and I think it goes to what the commission is saying in terms of preservation of the historic part as they saw it of the structure. The definition of altered shall include the words rebuilt, reconstructed, rehabilitated, remodeled, renovated, and restored. And the definition of constructed shall include the words built, erected, installed, enlarged, and moved. So using the definitions of the Act, it appears that this is more an alteration and moving of a structure. And then you would apply a different standard than the standard for raising a structure. Then you would examine the normal considerations that the Historic District Commission typically will employ on their applications, which is, consider among other things, general design, arrangement, texture, material and color of the building or structure, the location on the lot, and relation of such factors to similar features of buildings and structures and the immediate surroundings, and the position of such building or structure in relation to the street or public way, and to other buildings and structures. So that would appear to be the standard more applicable to talking about a renovation and proposed preservation of certain elements of this structure, and then moving that structure on the lot, as opposed to removing the structure, demolishing and destroying that structure, and removing it, as opposed to retaining a portion of it and moving it on that lot. So I just wanted to clarify those standards that are provided under the legislation that the Historic District Commission must follow, and then also for your consideration as to whether you think they were arbitrary and capricious in applying the facts that were before them.
Question?
Actually, so are you suggesting that the HTC may not have used the right administrative process when they looked at those standards as opposed to the demolition standards?
No, it appears that they did.
Okay.
That Chairman Pol described the rationale that they followed in terms of how they would employ the demolition policy and how they treat certain structures.
Okay, okay.
That's assuming that a demolition policy even applies to this.
So you're saying it may not apply, but they use the right?
May not even apply.
But the fact that it doesn't or doesn't really is moot.
Right, and there's a big difference between a policy and the legislation itself. So failure to follow a published policy, you know, that would possibly provide grounds for you to find arbitrary and capricious decision-making. In other words, you have a set policy, you followed it in all these cases, somehow willy-nilly you decided not to follow that policy. In this case, why did you do that? That would go into that type of an analysis. But a policy is very different from their actual legislation and their jurisdictional authority over this. So that would be, you know, a more important consideration as to whether they failed to follow the charge under their legislation. One other thing I did want to note, because the question came up about, there are two separate meetings, you know, they had the initial meeting, and then they had a follow-up meeting where they addressed further concerns, and they had the vote. One issue that came up was about, somebody had mentioned, you know, they're unable to resell the property or something like that. That would be an irrelevant consideration for the Historic District Commission to rule on one of these applications before them. But the fact that that was part of the minutes, you know, that that was mentioned, doesn't mean necessarily that that was the basis for their decision. But that was something that came up, so I did want to address that.
But how would we know whether it was the basis for their decision?
They, it could be the vote, you know, if they had findings for their vote, you know, and that's really an important question in terms of customary practice with the Historic District Commission. You know, in a perfect world, really, there would always be findings and a vote or written decision.
Which is what I started the meeting today asking for.
Right. But they have so many applications before them that, you know, as a practical matter, you know, this is the customary practice that they followed, is to have their, the basis for their decision-making reflected in their minutes.
I understand that.
Just to clarify, so essentially, if there was some sort of evidence that those factors, the marketability factors, things that were a major part of the decision, then it could be considered arbitrary, but otherwise, they followed policy?
Yes, if you find that that was the basis for their decision, that would be an example of arbitrary and capricious decision-making, because it's a factor that isn't within their jurisdiction.
Jurisdiction.
jurisdiction, legislation.
And, I mean, just for a little bit of background for everybody else, because I have the experience, there are written decisions done when there's a denial. That's just what's become the practice, because those are, most of the time, the decisions that might be appealed. Generally, in most cases, they're not appealed when it's an approval.
And that was, yes.
With the sheer volume, it would be very, very difficult to staff writing all those decisions.
That was something important that came up during that, is that, you know, it was important to have a written denial, a certificate of denial that gets filed, so that it would trigger some type of appeal deadline that you could, you know, follow and apply under the statute. So in those cases of a denial of an application, it became important, you know, as part of the HDC process to have something recordable and stamped, and then that triggers an appeal deadline for the applicant.
So the public hearing's closed, right?
Well, no, I was making sure that there weren't any more, no, we're not taking any more public comments, but the board is asking questions of whoever they need to.
I don't have any more questions, so we can still talk.
Is everyone ready to close the public hearing?
Yeah.
Okay. Close the public hearing. What's the pleasure of the word?
I vote to uphold the decision of the HDC and deny the appeal. Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
All opposed.
Aye.
Any abstentions?
I'm an aye.
Okay. I'm an aye. Word of one.
And I'm opposed. I'm just reading the minutes. If the minutes are the, you know, I'll state my reasoning. If the minutes of the HDC are the record, the first set of minutes starts, asserted that no one will buy this property because of the old house, and that was the owner. And then Mr. Paul, this is a very difficult problem. It's a small quirky building with limited ability to be sold. You know, we have someone willing to work with the core, so it was the basis of this decision. And I think that if we can't, in my opinion, if we cannot find a way to, you know, keep these historic homes in their sighting, even if we have to upgrade them, but if we aren't able to keep them in their sighting, then what kind of preservation are we really doing? You know, when you go down Cliff Road and you see these houses up with nothing left, what are we really doing? And I just think as a community, I'm just really distressed and disgusted at what we've done to our historic preservation.
But I didn't see anything in the action of the HDC that would rise to the level of, that would make an appeal.
Well, that's, we differ. I have just read you the minutes, which we were told was the record.
I understand. But we heard from the attorney that, you know, that that's, that was a little different.
Well, I think you have to prove it. I agree with Matt. I am concerned that there was discussion about the marketability of the houses, the front runner for why some of the decisions were made. But I don't think there's enough evidence to say that that is entirely or even the major reason why the decision was made.
And, you know, traditionally, I uphold the HDC. Ninety-nine times out of 100, this is a very difficult situation. But I look at something like this, and if we can't do, you know, if we can't do a better job with, you know, something that is this old and this contributing and this historic, I just...
Are you putting yourself in the place of the HDC?
I'm putting myself, as an aggrieved party, on the island to these sort of things. And I'm not putting myself in the HDC's position. I'm putting myself in the, you know, I feel personally aggrieved. I feel personally insulted with some of the stuff that we've lost.
I agree. I agree. Then we could all vote to deny all the HDC appeals.
I may have made a different decision if I was sitting on the HDC or a slightly different decision. I don't know. But I cannot substitute my judgment.
Right.
And they were, I don't believe that they were arbitrary and capricious. And with the way everything was presented, it does not sound like marketability of the property was a reasoning that really played in, certainly not for any majority of the board, and I don't think for, with the way Mr. Paul presented his case. Anyway.
I could argue that I've lost.
Okay, let's have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.